In a world where loyal companions await, one place stands as their beacon of hope. The Pet Resource Center of Hillsborough County, where you can adopt your very own superhero. Adopt a dog, find your sidekick, and unlock the power of unconditional love. Suit up, show up, and adopt today. For more information, visit hcfl.gov/pets.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Vice Chair Christine Miller, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can I have the roll call, please?
Hey, again. Bowles. Commissioner Bowles.
He was muted, but I heard him say here.
Present.
Cameron Sepeda.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wostel. Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners's Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop. The Planning Commission staff will present to the board regarding pending applications for amendments to the comprehensive plan. No action will be taken this afternoon. I now request that the Planning Commission staff begin with the first item on the workshop agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. I wanted to point out a couple items of order. Item A1, there was an updated agenda sent and posted on the Hillsborough County website. That item has been withdrawn. That is HCCPA 25-15. And then also, we did have a continuance submitted today for item A6, which is HCCPA 25-21. That's actually my item regarding the Planned Environmental Community Text Amendment. That item has been continued to the January cycle of plan amendments, so you will see that next spring. And with that, I can go ahead and introduce item A2, HCCPA 25-16, which will be presented by Mr. Diego Guerra. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is, again, this is a publicly initiated amendment regarding the surface water resource protection areas and the wellhead resource protection area map updates. Although this amendment is a map amendment, it is processed as if it were a text amendment. Both maps are part of the Future Land Use Map Series. The Surface Water Resource Protection Area Amendment aims at only including named tributaries directly connected to the Hillsborough River and Alaia Rivers, essentially removing ephemeral tributaries or tributaries that are not flowing for more than three quarters of the year. I do want to point out that this is only specific or only relates to those sources of water that are utilized for potable water.
Excuse me for one second. Are we supposed to be seeing your screen?
Yeah. Do you, you should see it now. Sorry.
I do. Thank you very much.
Yep. The, for the wellhead resource protection area, the applicant is proposing to, to remove the wellhead resource protection, protection zone one areas, and redefine the zone two delineated areas of, to also include an extra level of protection by including an additional buffer around the cones of contribution. To graphically display this, this is currently what's adopted in terms of the surface water protection areas. The surface water protection areas are annotated in that green hash, crosshatch. And then this is the proposed, again, removing those ephemeral tributaries. For the wellhead protection areas, the zone one protection areas are those red hashed areas located along the northern seam of the county boundary and toward the eastern, central eastern portion of the county. The zone two areas are those green boxes within those zone one areas that surround the wellhead protection areas. And then this is the proposed map. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. Myself and county staff are available for any questions you may have.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
How is this going to come to us? When is this, in what form? And when we get it, are we going to have any comments from the EPC or any of the reviewing agencies about this?
So, sir, yes. EPC has, I'm sorry. The applicant, which is Environmental Resources, has coordinated and discussed the amendment with Tampa Bay Water. EPC has submitted questions, and we, the amendment is, has been distributed for agency review.
Okay, so Tampa Bay Water is aware of it, and they'll comment back on it before we, before we get it?
Yes, they will have an opportunity to comment on it before you receive it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? My apologies for not being able to see. Next item, please.
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy to introduce item A3, which will be presented by Ms. Katrina Corcoran. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request that HTV share my presentation. Thank you. As Melissa mentioned, my name is Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here today to present HCCPA 25-17. This is a text amendment to the corridor preservation plan map. Next slide, please. Some background information on this request. It is a privately initiated plan amendment. It is a text amendment to add a corridor to Fort, a corridor Fort Haimner Road to the adopted corridor preservation plan map. A couple of notes on this. Fort Haimner Road is currently not constructed. And although this is a text amendment to amend a map, it is, there are no proposed policy changes as a part of this text amendment. Next slide, please. Some background information on the corridor preservation plan map. The mobility section has a map series that includes map one, which is the adopted corridor preservation plan map. You can see that map here on the right-hand side of this, of your screen. This is the currently adopted corridor preservation plan map. And some background on how that is utilized. It's utilized to protect future right-of-way from encroachment, provide connectivity, and ensure transportation corridors are adequate to serve planned growth and development patterns as defined in the future land use section. The map identifies the number of additional lanes needed on existing corridors or for new roadway connections. It also shows intersections and interchanges identified for either grade separation or reconfiguration. I'll direct your attention to the legend on the right-hand side of the map. You can see the corridors there are indicated by different colors. Those colors indicate different amounts of lanes that may be needed. Additionally, you'll see intersections and interchanges are indicated by the circles that you see on the map. In coordination with the Land Development Code, or LDC, the corridor preservation plan map is utilized to establish setbacks for development and provide clarity about development potential within the future right-of-way. Next slide, please. This slide shows the Fort Haimner Road proposed alignment as a part of this amendment. Again, this roadway is currently not constructed. It is located in southern Hillsborough County. You can see it starts at US 41 on the south, going all the way to, through I-75 into the Hillsborough County line. It's, there is a proposed interchange that is approximately where the roadway would interact with I-75. However, that interchange is not a part of this comprehensive plan amendment. It would not be reflected on the corridor preservation plan map at this time. The existing land use in this area is agricultural. It's utilized for farming. The future land use in this area is currently agricultural rural. Also, I'd like to note that the properties where the proposed alignment would occur are under the control of one property owner. This is, this area is also subject to an ongoing urban expansion area, or UEA, study that was directed by the BACC. It is also within the Little Manatee South Community Plan area. Finally, I'd like to note that there is potential right-of-way set aside for the continuation of this road in Manatee County's comp plan, so where it goes below the county line there. Next slide, please. This slide shows the corridor preservation plan map with the addition of the proposed Fort Haimner Road. I realize that's quite small. It's in the southernmost portion of the map at the bottom. And you can see that the roadway is orange, and that indicates that this proposed roadway would be preserved up to six lanes. Next slide, please. And since I realize that that map is a lot, and there's a lot going on there, this slide just shows a more zoomed-in look at the proposed roadway, again, starting at US 41, going south through I-75, and then to the county line. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Let me look and see if I see any questions or just speak up. Let's see. I don't see any questions at this time. If you want to go to the next item, please, Melissa.
Yes, absolutely. That brings us to item A4, HCCPA 25-19, which will be presented by Ms. Lillian Linehan. Thank you.
Can everyone see my screen, sharing the presentation?
I cannot see it.
What now?
Looks like it's, yes, we see it now. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lillian Linehan, Planning Commission staff, and I'm here to present HCCPA 25-19, located at 4950 Saffold Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 10.01 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area, and the amendment is associated with HCCPA 25-20, which is a request to change the future land use designation from agricultural rural one to five to residential four. This is the general location map. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan and Wyomama Village Plan, and is located north of Saffold Road and west of County Road 579. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. So, the proposed amendment would bring approximately 10.01 acres into the urban service area, which will require at a minimum a connection to public water and sewer. This concludes my presentation for HCCPA 25-19, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Do I see any questions? Give me one second to scroll through. I don't see any, but I do have one. If you can answer this for me, or perhaps, Melissa. Why, when we're looking at the urban service boundary, we obviously just push that all? And you can see, if you go back a few slides, it's kind of like a cutout there. Why wouldn't they just have included that at that time? Help me understand that a little better, would you please?
Yes, one second. I was trying to get the slide up. It's, don't go back, though. So. Yeah, for the parcels that were included in that publicly initiated urban expansion, for the urban expansion and to residential four, it was only parcels containing the future land use of the WVR2. So, the parcels that we see in that little section did not have a existing land use of WVR2, so that's why they were not included.
Excellent. That helps clarify for me. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I don't see any other questions. If you have one, just please speak up. If not, next item, please, Melissa.
Yes. Item A5 is HCCPA 25-20, and that will be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 25-20, located at 4950 Saffold Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 10.01 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from agricultural rural one to five to residential four. This is the general location map. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 25-19 to expand the urban service area. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan, as well as the Wyomama Village Plan. It is located north of Saffold Road and west of County Road 579. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has single-family uses and agriculture on the property. Data indicates that the site may contain significant wildlife habitat, and is also in the FEMA flood zone X. Agriculture is to the northwest and further southeast. Single-family uses are to the northeast and west, and there are public quasi-public institution uses to the south and east. Currently, the future land use designation is agricultural rural one to five. The agricultural rural one to five category allows one dwelling unit per five gross acres and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses and mining-related activities. Other future land use categories shown in this map include natural preservation and agricultural one to ten. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to residential four. The residential four category allows four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under AR one to five, the site could consider up to two dwelling units or 109,008 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of RES4, the site could consider up to 40 dwelling units or 109,08 square feet of non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational criteria may affect allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment would result in the increase in development potential by allowing higher residential density. And this concludes my presentation for ATCPA 25-20. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands up. And since we continued A6, Melissa, can we go on with A7, please? Thank you, Alexis.
Yes, ma'am. Item A7 is HCCPA 25-22, and the presenter for that is Ms. Willow Micky. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Willow Micky with your Planning Commission staff. I will be briefing HCCPA 25-22, which is located at 11115 South County Road 39. Next slide. This request is a privately initiated, large-scale map amendment. It is made up of four parcels that total approximately 121.33 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from agricultural rural one dash five to residential one. Next slide. This plan amendment is part of the July 2025 cycle, located in the rural area and is within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Plan. Next slide. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. It is located west of South County Road 39 and south of Lithia Pine Press Road. Within the vicinity of the site, agricultural uses are located to the northwest and south. Single-family residential surrounds the site on all sides with public quasi-public located to the southwest. Next slide. The site is in the AR one dash five future land use category. This category allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses and mining-related activities. Surrounding land use categories include AR one dash five to the south and southwest, and residential one to the northeast and west. Further north, the public quasi-public land use includes an elementary school, and there is also natural preservation and agricultural one dash 10 further east. Next slide. The request is to change the site to residential one, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, farms, ranches, residential, neighborhood commercial, offices, and multipurpose projects. Next slide. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under AR one dash five, the site can be considered for up to 24 dwelling units and 1,321,283 square feet of non-residential. The change to residential one would allow for the consideration of 121, 121 dwelling units and 1,321,283 square feet of non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational criteria may affect the allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment would increase development potential by allowing consideration of higher residential density. Next slide. This concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me peek for any raised hands. Doesn't look like we have any questions, and it looks like you have the next one as well, Willow. If we're good, Melissa, she can move on to A8?
Oh, certainly. Thank you, ma'am.
Just waiting for the screen. Good afternoon. I'm Willow Micky with your Planning Commission staff. I'll be briefing HCCPA 25-23, which is located at 117 North Dover Road. Next slide. This request is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment that is made up of two parcels that total approximately 21.76 acres. The request is to change the land use designation of these parcels from residential four to residential twenty. Next slide. This plan amendment is part of the July 2025 cycle, located in the urban service area and is not within the limits of the community plan. The site is located to the north of the Energy Innovation Park. Next slide. Here's an aerial photo of the site outlined here in pink. The blue line represents the urban service area boundary, with the west of the line being the urban service area, including the site. It is located north of State Road 60, east of North Dover Road, and west of Sidney Washer Road. Within the vicinity of the site, there are public quasi-public uses to the north and west. Across State Road 60, there are a mix of uses, including light industrial, heavy industrial, single-family residential, agricultural, and light commercial. To the east of the site, there is single-family residential vacant land in a mobile home park. Next slide. The site is in the residential four land use category. Residential four allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Surrounding land use categories include RES4 to the northeast and south of the site. Directly to the west is residential nine with OC20 located further west. Public quasi-public is located to the north and further east of the site, and the end. Public quasi-public is located to the north and further east of the site, and the Energy Innovation Park lies to the south. Next slide. The request is to change the site to residential 20, which allows for the consideration of uses such as agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. Next slide. This slide outlines the potential impacts of the requested land use change. Currently, under residential four, the site can be considered for up to 87 dwelling units and 236,966 square feet of non-residential. The change to RES20 would allow for the consideration of 435 dwelling units and 710,899 square feet of non-residential uses. The proposed amendment will result in a potential increase in development potential by allowing consideration of higher residential density and greater commercial intensity. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Willow. Do I see any questions? I do not. Next item, I believe, is A9, please.
Yes, A9 is Tyreek Royal, will be presenting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tyreek Grow, Planning Commission staff, and today I'll be presenting HCCPA 25-24 at 10601 Paul Buckman Highway. This request is privately initiated, small-scale map amendment with approximately 4.74 acres. The request is to change the land use designation from agricultural rural one five and agricultural one ten to light industrial. The location of the site is in the eastern portion of the undercooper Hillsborough County. It's part of the July 2025 cycle, is in the rural area and not within the limits of the community plan. This is an aerial photo of the site outlined in pink. It's located south of County Line Road, west of Paul Buckman Highway. The surrounding uses include agricultural and single-family uses to the south, single-family uses to the north, agricultural uses to the west, and heavy industrial uses to the east across Paul Buckman Highway. And that's owned by the Mosaic Properties, a positive money. The site is in agricultural one five and AR110 future land use categories. It allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood, commercial, offices, industrial uses related to agricultural uses, and mining-related activities. The applicant is requesting the change of land use category from AR15 and AR110 to ALI. The light industrial allows for consideration of agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support offices, warehouses, and retail uses. The change from AR15 and AR110 to light industrial would allow for an increase in development by allowing greater commercial intensity. The commercial intensity will increase from 0.25 FAR or approximately 51,000 square feet to 0.75 FAR or approximately 154,000 square feet. It's important to know that if this is determined to be a lot of record, one dwelling unit would be permitted. And that does conclude my briefing. I'm happy to answer any question, questions again.
Thank you, Tyree. Let me look and see if I have any questions. Seeing none, I think we can move on to our last item.
Yes, our last item is item A10, HCCPA 25-25, and the presenter for that item is Lily Linehan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Lillian Linehan, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 25-25, located at North Highway 301 and Williams Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is small in scale and approximately 15.23 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from residential four to light industrial plan. This is a general location map. It is in the urban service area and within the limits of the Tenoda-Sassa Community Plan. It is located south of North Highway 301 and west of Williams Road. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink. The site is currently vacant, and there are some single-family uses to the east, south, and west of the site. North across Highway 301, there are some light and heavy commercial uses with mobile home parks, and to the northeast of the site, there are some light industrial uses. Currently, the future land use designation is residential four. The residential four category allows four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. And the site is surrounded by residential four on the east and west, west with suburban mixed use to the north of the site and residential 12 to the south. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to light industrial plan. The light industrial plan category does not allow for the consideration of residential uses and allows a maximum floor error ratio of 0.75. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, light industrial uses such as processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials as the predominant uses, including support office, warehousing, and retail uses. Under the existing conditions with the residential four designation, the site can be considered for a maximum of 60 dwelling units or 165,854 square feet of non-residential uses. And under the proposed future land use designation of light industrial plan, the site can be considered for a maximum of zero dwelling units or 497,564 square feet of non-residential uses. Proposed amendment would allow for the consideration of increased commercial intensity and eliminate the potential for residential development. This concludes my presentation for HCCPA 25-25, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on A10? Do we have any questions on any of the items that were presented this afternoon? Looking through, making sure. With that, Melissa, did you have anything else for us today?
We're completed today. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Appreciate y'all.